I've got a little one, I'm good, thank you. I didn't, I haven't seen one yet, no. All right, well, that's what we'll do for right now then, if you don't mind, okay, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'll call this regular city council meeting of August 8th to session. We were going to have some speakers at open forum and we put pink cards out instead of yellow cards, so we misled the people that wanted to speak to us, so we're gonna roll that back and we'll let everybody speak to us after the city council meeting is over, so that they'll have plenty of time. So with that being said, at this time, I would ask you all to stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for a motion approving the minutes of the special joint city council on housing and redevelopment authority work session of July 17th, 2017, the special city council work session of July 25th, 2017, and regular city council meeting of July 25th, 2017.
Second.
Aye. To make four out of the seven yards and they were all outstanding. Sue, if you'd like to come up and introduce the gardeners for us, please.
And so what we're going to do today, we're gonna kinda give you a little preview or review of the gardens. And first of all, I just wanna say a few words of thanks, because we couldn't have done this garden tour this year and been as successful without the help of, first of all, the staff members here, Kate Atchison, who's here, as well as Julie Urban. They were, we were a good team, Mary Olison and I have been co-chairing this since 2003. And a couple of years ago, I went to Julie and Kate and said, you know, you have these landscape awards, we have a garden tour, we need gardens, you need some people to do legwork, let's get together, and they agreed. And so we combined two years ago, the landscape awards and the Richfield Beautiful Garden Tour. But without Julie and Kate helping us so much, we couldn't have been as successful as we are. I also wanna thank Wagner's, because they did donate some gift cards for us. City of Richfield has been very generous, we are, Mary and I are part of the Richfield Garden Club. And so we also want to thank Steve Sheenberger and Lisa Hintermeister, because they had something very unique for us for the past two garden tours, and that was some water stops. And so they provided beverages and some snacks, and because the day was so hot last year, this year, it really did help to have the water stops. And I think if anybody went on the tour and was, went and saw that there were some water stops that really did help them along. So now with Kate's help, we're gonna do a little tour, a little visual, virtual tour here of the garden. So, ready to, ready to go. Okay, this is Lynn Barton's, she was at 6932 Newton. And if any of you went on this, went and visited this garden, it was exciting, colorful, and full of surprises. And so we really wanted you to take the time to take it all in, because you never knew what was behind those colorful flowers. Interesting containers, lots of art, and a gardener with tons of ideas. And who knows what kinda notions you'd come away with, and I think people who did come away, came away with some big smiles, and it was really a lot of fun. The next garden was Mary Shannon, she was, she, this was a one-stop, you got two gardens, with this one at 7036 and 7044 Logan. And these adjoining gardens are owned by family members who pooled their energies to create a double haven of floral splendor. And we really hope that you took a lot of time to enjoy these colors and creativity of these two gardens. And then with this garden too, you come away with a lot of great ideas. Number three was Julie Menchell's garden, and what, every year, we get asked, is there gonna be a garden with shade in it? Because so many of our gardens around Richfield have a lot of trees, so there's a lot of shade. And this formal garden has loads of shade, but this gardener has made the best of it. The gardens, along with their magnificent backyard, make this stop on the tour worth every minute. And this garden backs up to Woodlake Nature Center, and Julie had a lot of good stories about deer and coyotes and foxes in her yard. But it was, it was a beautiful garden, and the shade just really made it stand out. The next garden was Kathy Larson's. This was what we call our delightful doable garden, because there was, this will give you one idea after another to use in our own, in your own garden. And we had so many people, after they toured this garden, kinda were getting some great ideas of some fun things to do in their own yard, and it was just pure enjoyment. The next garden was Ken and Gail James', and this garden is really a star in their neighborhood. These, Gail and Ken really are community oriented in the fact that they invite people who are just walking by their garden to come and enjoy their fireplace. And if you look up, you'll see how unusual their hops crop is, because they have strong, a line between their yard and the noise wall, and the hops are going right up the line. And it's really, really pretty interesting. The next garden is Caitlin Horton', and this is on 14th. And when you come to that garden, the first thing you say, am I really seeing what I think I'm seeing? Come and see for yourself, and that you can still go by and see Caitlin's yard. And I understand now that the fall season's coming, she's gonna really kick it into high gear as far as decorating. And so she does some really fun things. So come and see for yourself, there's a terrific surprise here, and this is yard art at its finest. And then her backyard was just full of creative ways to spice things up, and Caitlin tells us she likes anything that's old and rusty. But it really did make for a gorgeous garden and a nice stop. So all of our gardeners are going to receive Wagner's gift cards, as well as certificates. And so the next thing that we're gonna talk about is Mary Olison, who's co-chair of the Richfield Beautiful, is going to announce the People's Choice Award. The People's Choice Award is the award that all of the attendees got to vote for their favorite garden. So Mary, if you wanna...
It was, it was so, this year was great, we had the ballots on the mats, which it made it a lot easier for people to circle and, and make their, make their votes. So the winner of the People's Choice Award is Mary Shannon. For everyone, though.
Okay, and another, this year, we have a new award, and it's called the Joe Kay Award. And I don't know if many of you know Joe Krasniak, he was just a wonderful gardener, he was a good friend to the city of Richfield, and he had a fabulous garden. He won several landscape awards, winning, he was on the garden tour many times. But because of Joe, who he was, and he was such a dear man, we were really, wanted to kinda remember him in a way that we gardeners understand. So this is Pam Krasniak, she's going to award the Joe Kay Award, and she's got a little, few things to say.
Yes, first of all, I would like to say, Joe and I love living in Richfield. Originally, I'm from the UK, and Joe was a super dancer and a wonderful gardener. He, he grew 300 geraniums every year under grow lights, so he was gardening all year round. This year, I was not able to put in 300, so I put in about 50. And he also had a secret about putting banana skins in the ground. He cut them up in little one-inch sizes, put them in bags, and put them in the freezer. So several years, we had a freezer full of banana skins. And anyway, the squirrels liked the banana skins also. But anyway, the geraniums did so wonderfully well, and I, I really don't know what else to say, but I was married to a super gardener, and I want to award Mary Shannon for the Joe Kay Award. You have the gardener that Joe would have loved.
Well, that is all we have today, but I just, again, I wanna thank everyone who has supported us through the years, who has traveled with us, and of course, to our gardeners. We couldn't do this without the gardeners, but we've made a lot of friends, and we're really happy that we're, we're gonna keep going. Mary and I say we're gonna keep doing it, till we can't do it, but we're really happy. So thank you so much.
Susan, thanks for bringing...
Till we get our walkers, and we'll be there.
Thanks for bringing beauty back to Richfield, because, I mean, it's wonderful, I mean, just, those are just terrific. And the colors and the activity, just...
You know, the key of it is, and former mayor Marty Kurzner, I've said this to him, you never know what's in those backyards. Those, those gardens, that beauty has always been here. But we're just out there digging it up, and Mary and I have been running around the backyards and chasing by dogs and whatever we have to do to get those gardens out there in front of people. But it's important to us to share that beauty, and it's important for the city of Richfield. It's our gift to you, and we're very happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Hopefully, Sue, hopefully you have a new category that is urban farm home, and we will win that category.
I want your garden on there in the next year or so, right?
We will have an urban farm category.
I'll be after ya, 'cause I know, know, you know, I have a lot of tenacity about it.
Just to indicate to all of you that the city of Richfield is flexible, including the city council, I'm going to return to the opening session and have some people come up that wanna speak to us. The first speaker on open forum is Kevin Watts. Mr. Watts, remember, it's three minutes, and please sign in and give us your name and your address.
Thank you, my name is Kevin Watts, I'm at 6900 Russell Avenue, that's the intersection of Russell and 69th Street. And I just wanted to address the council and my concerns of what's going on on 69th Street and the dangers that it proposes with the multi-use lane there for people who live on it. I'm not opposed to bike lanes, I'm not opposed to, I'm a bike advocate, but there's unintended consequences that are, a lot of us who live on the corner of 69th and along the south side of 69th Street, that we have to suffer for what isn't a good intention, but the bad results of that. Traffic is just way too close to our side of the street, I'd like to see a redesign or a return to what it was before. When we're doing things like mowing the lawn, shoveling snow, the cars just come way too close to us to make it a safe situation for us in that thing. So I would just like the city council to take that into consideration when you're looking at what you're gonna do on 69th Street with that pilot. It is very, very frightening to do simple tasks on that street with the way it is designed in its state. Again, love the idea, poorly planned, it's the bad design and it's confusing.
Stay tuned, Mr. Watts, it's on the agenda this evening.
That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ken Meter. Once again, Mr. Meter, three minutes, and please sign in with your name and your address.
Sure, Ken Meter, Humboldt, 7415 Humboldt Avenue. I came with regard to item E on the consent agenda, and I'm a, my, my family moved into Richfield in 1949, and we've maintained the house there ever since, I took it over in 1992. And my main concern about, I really like the neighbors who are proposing a new house, I really would like to have them build the house they want to have in, on the block. But we noticed and we were talking to them, they had not been informed of the fact that there will be a flyover ramp from 76th Street going northbound 35, which was decided by the council back in May of 2004. And no one had informed of that, I was, had, I had the unfortunate duty of trying to explain to them that there were some plans that might affect their livability of that house. My, my suggestion would be that the city council will really have difficult time approving a new house for that block without having voted previously to protect the houses that are already there. I think that the flyover ramp could very well make my house unlivable, because I will see and hear and experience pollution from every, every car that's waiting to get on the freeway. So I would urge you to consider certainly supporting these homeowners to build a new home, but also to protect the rest of us at the same time, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Daniker.
Good evening, my name is Kim Daniker. I live at 4404 15th Avenue South in Minneapolis. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak tonight in this forum. Special thanks for, to Maria for all her, her help in welcoming us here. I was, I just have to say, I was a little bit disappointed to hear that it was suspected that some people coming to speak up for one of the members in the community could potentially become a problem, just because people have concerns and wanna share them. So I just, I have to get off my chest that it's, it feels a little bit insulting that when people go on social media and say stuff like, see that, oh, the New North is coming to the meeting, all of a sudden, it's assumed that this is gonna become disruptive, that this is not going to be a place where, where people are going to share in a reasonable manner. And so I would just, I would urge you to check your, your biases and your prejudices there with that kind of stuff, if you are one of the people who thought that us coming here was going to be a problem. I'm just here to support my friend Alonso Pollard, who lives in the community. Speaking of good intentions with bad results, as was mentioned earlier, I understand that the police of Richfield want to keep the streets safe. I understand that you guys have a job to do, and that you have certain protocols to follow when you're doing it. I've seen, I've seen some videos of some interactions recently that were a bit disturbing to me, and I'm just gonna highlight just a few of the things that I've seen. And I bring them up here just to let you guys know that I see it, that I'm watching it, that I expect accountability, and we've had some fruitful and productive meetings with some, with the mayor, with the police chief, with Maria, and so I'm grateful for those conversations, but I just wanna make other people aware of it, because I think that the more people who are aware, the better. I don't think, I don't think society is helped when problems get swept under a rug, or when we, when we treat them like they just belong in the corner. So some of the things that I have seen are police officers coming into a home before producing a warrant. I have seen police officers tell Alonso that he was under arrest, that they had a warrant for his arrest, and that they had, even though they had the warrant, they were not going to show it to him until he got in the vehicle. I don't know if that's proper protocol, but if it is, it needs to be revisited, 'cause that does not seem appropriate to me. I was reminded of the situation with Sandra Bland in Texas, when an officer told him on his own property, came up to his house, his own property, and told him he needed to put his cigarette out at his own house. People have the right to smoke at their own house. And so I, I see freedoms being infringed on, I see rights being violated.
Ms. Daniker, remember, it's three minutes.
Thank you. So basically, I just, I wanna see accountability for some of the things that are going on. I know that they, that evidence is going to be submitted to the police chief, and I'm just here to say that, that I see it, that I'm following it, and that I expect accountability.
Thank you, did you sign in, please?
Oh, here?
Please. Gonna have trouble with the next name, and I apologize upfront, Joel Kostrowski?
Hiola.
Hiola, I'm sorry, I said I apologize in advance, and I wasn't even close.
Most people don't get the Kostrowski.
I did get that, correct?
Yep, you did. So, Hiola Kostrowski, I am now a current resident of Eden Prairie. I'm here, I'm because Kim invited me to share my experience, that we had a few years with my kids and Richfield Police. I'll first start off with, I, I am very thankful for our police officers, they do a really, they do do a really good job. So this isn't a broad thing on all police officers. I mean, I have one son who wants to become a police officer, and I have one who has informed me that he'd love to be in the back of a police officer car, so we have started his bail fund now. But a few years ago, I'm pregnant with my third son, we were at Target, and I did not realize my children were putting things in the cart that shouldn't have been in the cart. After paying for what I had put in the cart, we were stopped by police within the store, we hadn't even gotten out the store, and was informed, we've been watching you the whole time you were here. I was there at Target for about an hour and a half, anyone shopped with young kids, you know how long it takes. And was informed that they had watched me the whole hour and a half, and they had watched things be put in the cart by my children. I said, well, we can take it out, or I can pay for it, either way, like, we can solve this now. I was then informed, no, in fact, we're gonna bring you back to security here and write you out a ticket for shoplifting. I hope what was grabbed was under $500, because if it was more, we're going to have to arrest you on the spot. This was in front of my kids. I'm back in security, long story short, we had comments made about my socioeconomic status, which they did not know anything of, but it was if you are having issues buying things, you know there's programs for that, in front of my children. Who at the time were four, four and two and a half. I was not given any leniency. Fast forward three years later, I was actually able to get that, I mean, the court process was horrible. I showed up to court, at one point, I showed up to court after a spinal tap, because we were informed, had I not shown up, a warrant would be put on, my arrest. So I showed up to court, 12 hours, less than 12 hours after a spinal tap. Anyone who's had a spinal tap without a blood patch, horrible. And it was still on my record. Luckily, I had the privilege and know people who were able to navigate me through this process, and about a month ago, it was espunged and dismissed off my record, and it needed to be just due to where I'm employed and my career choice. But I just asked, just do better, know better, do better, and just accountability. And, I mean, my kids, they're young enough that they don't really remember, and they love police officers. But it's something that will probably stick with me for a very, very long time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Corden Nielsen. Remember to sign in, please, Mr. Nielsen.
Hi. I'm Corden Nielsen, founder of the New North. I am here on behalf of Richfield resident and my friend Alonso Pollard. For as long as I've known him, he's been trying to get out of a hole. A hole he's found himself in. And he needs money to reinstate his license, he knows that. But in order to get money, he has to work. And in order to get to work, he's gotta get there somehow. He has been continuously targeted and harassed, because the police out here know his license has been revoked. However, recently, last weekend, he was imprisoned over a false police report. His house was raided, and then again, yesterday, he was arrested on a bogus warrant. I've seen many policy violations in the videos he's posted and sent to me. And as we, and as Kim said, but what bothers me most is the unprofessionalism. He's, he's a human being, he deserves to be talked to with respect. I am glad that I heard some city council members and the mayor were able to meet with him this afternoon and were amicable to working things out and helping him get on the right track. I couldn't be happier to hear that, so thank you, whoever is involved in that. I'm just here to, to ask for more, to ask for more professionalism in these situations, because many of you know Philando Castile was pulled over 52 times. And ultimately, he was killed. I pray to God, every time I get a call from him, that he lives through the incident. Because if you're getting stopped time and time and time again, at some point, something's gonna go worse than it already has. And I don't wanna have to be here advocating for my dead friend. So if you could ease up and just let him get back on the right track, he's trying, he really is. But he can't do it if he's constantly been getting hit with more fines and more money that he doesn't have. So please, just ease up on him, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Thompson. Please sign in, Mr. Thompson, and we've got a limited three minutes, thank you. Please sign in, Mr. Thompson, and we've got a limited three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Thompson. I'm also one of the co-founders of the New North. Also, I'm a CEO of a corporation called Fight for Justice LLC. I'm probably well-known because Philando Castile was one of my best friends. I worked with Philando for 11 years at St. Paul Public School. I talked to my friend two days before he was murdered by the St. Anthony Police Department. Since then, I find myself in these various cities. Time and time again, we're talking about the police and we're talking about accountability. And the first person, the first body we come to is the city council and the mayor of that particular city. I come today by myself because hopefully with this conversation that we have, we can build on it and try to improve the better policing and community relations. In particular with my friend Alonso Pollard, who actually is being harassed. He's being harassed, he's being profiled, he's having police officers sitting outside of his home waiting for him to put them keys in that car. What I'm asking is the city help him get his license. Yo, he could be a productive citizen, but he needs help. Instead of harming him, help him. Those are the type of things that police officers can do. I mean, when did the police stop policing and stop being police? They say they serve and protect. Well, serve Alonso. Serve him more than a ticket or a one-way ticket to jail, serve him more than handcuffs. I'm asking the city council and the mayor to speak to the police chief and some of the higher-ups in your, in your, in your organization. Because otherwise, it just looks like you're picking on somebody. And believe me when I tell you, I'm here by myself. If I had to come back, I'm going to bring 200 or 300 more people with me because the police presence here is intimidating. Very intimidating, alright? And I'm, I'm for sure that you guys don't have this type of police presence at a normal city council meeting. You guys had, had someone give you a heads up that we were coming and we were going to come, but we decided to come with just a small amount because I think the key to fixing this problem is to talk to you guys. I think the key to fixing this problem is your willingness to work with the New North and work with Alonso. I think your willingness to talk to the officers involved. I mean, it's not, how you, what you say is how you say it to people and they're very disrespectful. You should view some of the tapes and what they'll do is say, well, listen to how Alonso talks to us. You're the professional. Alonso's not a professional officer, you're the professional. I beg the city council and you mayor to do something because your city is on watch. Your city is on watch by Black Lives Matter St. Paul, Black Lives Matter Minneapolis, the NAACP, the New North, Coalition of Communities Against Police Brutality. There's a lot of organizations that wanted to come to your city council meeting today that we put on pause because I believe that the city of Richfield has it in them to work with these organizations and to better the police-community relationship. We have to work together. You just had a bombing a few blocks down, we have to work together. You are my family, you are my family. The color of my skin should not be my sin. The color of his skin should not be his sin. My friend was executed in his car. He was executed, he was judged by a cop. He was convicted and executed in his car. I don't want that to be the fate for another one of my friends. So I travel around the world for my friends and speak up on injustice, this is unjust. I mean, you know, instead of writing them tickets, help them get a job so they could pay child support, so they could pay his bills. Help them, city, you guys got resources, resources that we don't know about, but I know you guys know about them. I just want you guys to consider that. I thank you guys for my three minutes of time. But I don't want to have to come back here with a coalition of people yelling at a city council and a mayor, news reporters everywhere. This is not a bad city. And I have faith that you guys would do the right thing in meeting with Alonso and his wife and trying to come to a, a mutual agreement when it comes to police sitting outside of his home, raiding his house, bogus warrants. Come send somebody, brother, come talk to Alonso. There has to be a liaison, somebody with some common sense and courtesy to say, I'm going to go talk to Alonso. You guys stay back. There has to be a way. If I can think of ways, I'm quite sure me and you together can think of ways. I thank you guys for that and I, I ask you to please consider everything that I brought to the city council. I thank you so much again.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I would, I would just suggest that Richfield is a great city and the dialogue moving in the right direction's already started. So, thank you for coming, thank you all for speaking. With that being said, it seems a little bit ironic to move on to hometown hits, but it's next on the agenda. So bear with us while we talk, while we talk about the good things in Richfield, alright?
You will like mine, don't worry.
Would you like to start?
Yes. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the community members that are here today. And every time we have a group of community members, I try to say thank you for coming to city council and city hall. This is your home here in Richfield and we are here to serve everybody here. When you brought up Alfonso, or Alonso, excuse me, Alonso's case and when you brought up Al Farouk, we actually have a group of Richfield community members right there, right now. They canceled their meeting and they're at the mosque providing solidarity and support. You are 100% right on when you say we are brothers and sisters and we are in this together. Our country was founded on genocide of our native brothers and sisters and discrimination and racism continues today. And Richfield is not immune to that, nowhere in our country is immune to that. And my hats off to hometown heroes goes to all of the community members in Richfield and beyond that have been working very hard today and, you know, they continue to work hard in spite of hatred, in spite of fear, in spite of difference. There are communities all over coming together to create a different reality where we are bringing people together across difference for a more equitable, a more inclusive and a more just Richfield and a more just Minnesota and a more just country. And I wanted to mention some of those specific initiatives. So like I said, the support for the Al Farouk mosque, who are our neighbors and actually a lot of Muslim community members that live in Richfield attend that mosque. There have been people from all over coming out to support our brothers and sisters at the mosque. Last week, we had Night to Unite, I believe it was last week, correct? And that is where we have community members from across Richfield come together and have block parties inviting their neighbors to come and have food together, get to know one another. We had police out there, we had fire, we had council members, we had everybody out. And one of the things that I was very fortunate to attend was a candlelight vigil for a young man, Jonathan O'Shaughnessy, who was shot here in Richfield during our Richfield festivities, which is one of the biggest events for Richfield during our, after our street dance. And we saw community members from across the city come together to support Jonathan and his family. And the search continues for justice there. And I thank the police for continuing that work and I thank, thank all of the residents and community members supporting. I thank the people who are here today and PMAC and our police department and everybody, our city staff who are working together. These issues are not easy, they're not pretty and they're not going to go away. And all of us are going to suffer if we don't work together to address them. We just had a joint study session with our schools and we're talking about the impact that affordable housing has on our students. We're talking about the future of our schools and our city. Whether we like it or not, we're all tied together. And I have my hats off to those of us who are working hard across difference when it's easier to put blame and, you know, not know somebody else and blindly accuse others when what we should be doing is working across difference. We have community members who are working to keep our students and our tenants in their homes. Just because you are a renter does not mean that you do not have rights and you are not a resident of the city. So I could keep going, but I just want to say that my hats off goes to all of the community members who are actually putting their heads together, working across difference and making a change for a more equitable Richfield. And that came up in so many different things and I, I really mean that. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Howard.
I too want to thank folks that came out and speak today. And I just, I was writing things down as folks were speaking. We want accountability. I heard do better. I heard build on conversation. Heard we need to be willing to talk. I heard we want better police-community relations. And I heard we have to work together. I agree with all of those things. I think everyone up here does. And you coming here to share that, I think, helps us take a positive step. And I do want to call out that there are positive steps happening here in Richfield to improve and strengthen the relationship between police and community. We've had a number of, a handful, a handful of police-community conversations. One around immigration issues that I think produced some positive dialogue and we're working on putting together another community conversation. This council and with their leadership, our, our chief took action to eliminate our civil service union expressly to increase the diversity on our police force. These are positive steps. We're mindful, they're not solutions in themselves. But the, these sort of shared values that all we all want in our community about being safe, about wanting security, we share them and some of the things that were discussed today, I think we can share those virtues as well. And they are, as was mentioned, a place for us to continue working together. I wanted to just mention a few other things that happened recent, recently. I had the, I stopped by a pedestrian safety event that our staff and community members put together near Nicollet Avenue and 70th and 72nd. Folks may have seen the, those crosswalks up over the last several months as part of a study. The event was aimed at both increasing understanding from motorists and pedestrians. Just in my 20 minutes there, it was interesting to see families and kids on bikes come by and use the, use the crosswalk. There's definitely some understanding and education we can do there. And so I thank our staff and all the community members that put that together. Council member Reagan Gonzalez mentioned that there is a group at Al Farouk that, that are on our Human Rights Commission. They were supposed to meet tonight, but so many of our Human Rights Commissioners wanted to go to that, that they canceled. I just, it was, it was going to be two of our student members' final meetings, Yami and Swope No. And I just wanted to thank them. I've been our liaison to the Human Rights Commission for the last couple of years and I've worked with both of them and they've just been such a joy to work with. I think we're going to provide some recognition to them. And we highlighted this with our school board work session. We have engagement from our students with our work in the city and it's just so great and something to build on as well. And I too wanted to highlight Night to Unite. I think, you know, we got out across the city. It was, I just want to thank all of the 180 neighborhood block captains and all the folks that came out. I had a lot of really great conversations with folks and I wanted to applaud our public work staff. Most of my meetings that I went to were near 66th Street over on the west side. They've been having to deal with quite a bit of construction. I heard almost all positive comments from folks about the kind of things that they've heard and being able to sort of be prepared and live, live through that. And plus they can kind of see now what it's going to look like. So I wanted to thank staff for their work to make sure that folks are aware of those things.
Thank you. Council member Troutman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to echo some of the thoughts that, that both Mr. Howard and Ms. Reagan Gonzalez shared. You what, until, until about 18 hours ago, my, my hats off to Richfield, and I'll just mention this briefly, was going to be about the Woodlake Nature Center and the great programming. They have summer camps, they run them all along, all, all summer long. And my brother was mentored and invested in by our naturalists that now my children are being mentored in. And I think that's, that's, that's beautiful, it's great, and it's great to be a part of this community. What I think is just, is important to say tonight is that when people come up with their complaints, I just want to say thank you. And I want to say for anybody who's coming into the city council for the first time, this is, our business is your business and this house is your house. And so you're, you're welcome here. And I want to be, I want to be crystal clear about that, that this isn't a distraction to what the city does. But receiving these concerns and taking them seriously is, is the meat and the core of what we do as the council. And all the comments that were made here only are the beginning of a dialogue. It's not a conclusion to anything. And so I just want to express that commitment. One, I'm grateful. Two, you're welcome, you're welcome again. And I appreciate the, the owner of Fight for Justice LLC, I didn't catch his name. But, but the proclamation that we are family is, is a privilege to have that extended. And so I want to say, I want to say thank you to all of you and say you're welcome. You're welcome here to speak to us anytime, but you're welcome to speak to us and continue that conversation outside of the context of, of the dais here because this isn't the perfect context in which to have a dialogue. I also want to say thank you as a third-generation Richfield resident. I want to say thank you to my law enforcement officers who've protected and served my family for generations. And so I just want to recognize that too as part of the conversation. I'm grateful for your service, but this is, this is a mission-critical conversation and it's the core of what we do as the council. So, so thank you guys and hats off to Richfield.
Thank you. Council member Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking council member Reagan Gonzalez for facilitating, facilitating the discussion that has taken place not only with her and the mayor and, and our law enforcement. You know, we have to start somewhere. And we have to start by sitting down and not only exchanging thoughts and ideas and frustrations, what have you, but we have to start listening to each other. You know, we, you know, we work with our police officers and I think they, you know, for the most part do a wonderful job. But they're not perfect and I'm not saying that they are. But the point is, is that we support them because we work as a team in this community. And that team also is part of the residents that we represent. And those residents should come to us, they should pick up the phone, they should call one of us or, or the city administration or the police. And let's continue the dialogue. This is just the beginning. I mean, you know, it's just, it's kind of like, I mean, I know this is not a real comparison, but you know, it's kind of like marriage counseling to some degree. You know, you can, you can go for years and, and you know, at least you, you keep trying. And that's what we have to do. We have to keep trying and we have to keep the faith and we have to put our best foot forward and we have to take care of business. Okay, having said that, then I did want to, for hats off, I did want to congratulate Ann Schmidt, who was the interim director for, for the Richfield Chamber of Commerce. And she was recently hired as the permanent president of the Chamber of Commerce. And I will invite her to come and, and perhaps give us a little presentation as to, you know, what the chamber is doing and how we could also help them into continuing, you know, to work on behalf of our businesses. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It, it's interesting, my hats off are to the, to the four council member up here because I want everybody to understand that what you hear them say, they live. They're honest, they're straightforward, they believe in what they said from up here because they live it every day. They're very supportive of not just minorities, they're supportive of people that need help. They're supportive of affordable housing in Richfield. And the, the thing I find most remarkable is they walk the walk and they talk the talk. And so I think as long as we have council members serving on the city council that represent the values and, and the heart and the stamina and the work that these four put into their job, I think Richfield's always going to be a great city. And now just a bit of levity in terms of night out. And to show you that nobody up here really takes themselves as too important or anything else. Unbeknownst to me, until I started passing out the trivia cards, I didn't realize that I was the second question on there. Question was, who is the new mayor of Richfield? And most people didn't answer that. So we don't take ourselves important, we take the citizens important. I think that's the most important thing to do. So thank you very much. And thank everybody that came in and spoke to us tonight. I'm going to echo what everybody said. Sometimes we read things, sometimes we hear things. But when you sit and look eye to eye with people that are concerned and scared in the city they've lived in for a period of time and they're raising their children. And there, a lot of times there's misperceptions, there's miscommunication. there's miscommunication, there's problems, but the dialogue started today, and I'm going to give hats off to, to the chief because he came in, we caught him after hours, and he sat down and he listened, and, and there's not a plan to move forward, we still need to have some further discussions with people, we need to understand what's going on before we can really put a plan in place, but, but the process has started, I can guarantee you that. So, thank you very much. Now I would look for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I know we had a citizen number speak on one of the items, and I just wanted to suggest we remove that from the consent.
I believe it was item E.
That's right. Item E, yep.
And I think, Mr. Debitz, you got that correct?
Yes, Mayor, item E is off.
So, the two, item B and item E were removed from the consent?
Yes. Two items are off the consent, B and E.
Why don't you give us what remains then?
All right.
Did we get the approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda's approved. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The consent calendar for those in the audience contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once a consent, excuse me, once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on these items is necessary. Tonight we start with item A, consideration of the first reading of an ordinance amending the city code subsection eight oh two related to small cell wireless installation in the city right-of-way, and schedule a second reading for September twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Now we go to item C, consideration of the approval of an agreement with Safe Water Commission to assist with administering the updated cross-connection program. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a site plan amendment to allow additional parking space at sixty-nine forty-one Nicollet Avenue. Item F, consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a site plan amendment and variance to allow a building addition and a reconfigured parking lot for a K through eight school at fourteen oh one Seventy-Sixth Street West. Item G, consideration of the approval of a two-year use and indemnification agreement between the city of Richfield and Tom Price for the use of a four-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-foot square foot strip of land along the edge of Lincoln Field. Item H, consideration of the approval of a resolution to execute addendum, addendum A, sponsoring agency agreement between the Minnesota Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue Team and the city of Richfield. And then finally, item I, consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit and variance to allow a restaurant at sixty-four thirty-six Penn Avenue. This was an item that was continued from the July eleventh, two thousand seventeen city council meeting. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. I believe councilmember Garcia is going to address item B of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I think I've, I've got it right in front of me here.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I think this is the consideration and the approval of design engineering contract with Bolton and Menck Incorporated for the Lindell Avenue Street reconstruction between Sixty-Sixth Street and Seventy-Sixth Street, and approval of a resolution for reimbursement for certain expenditures for the proceeds of street reconstruction bonds to be issued by the city of the Lindell Avenue Street reconstruction. And I think what councilmember Garcia had originally suggested, it's a good suggestion, is, you know, Lindell Avenue, everybody drives it every day in Richfield, I, I think you start to talk about construction or anything related to it, people have questions, and so just the opportunity to hear about where this is at in the process, and would love to hear staff just kind of give an update to the city.
You know, and one of the things, and thank you for doing this, because my, my respiratory problems are just, you know, they're, sometimes I can handle things and sometimes I can't, but one, one of the things, you know, my favorite program that, that, that your department does, Director Kirsten, is, is Sweet Streets, and I always like to take credit for that. It's just my favorite program because it, it really works so well. Well, this, this particular issue is just, it just can't be cured with Sweet Streets. It's that, it's that, you know, we really need to do a little bit more surgery on it than, than we'd like, than we'd like, but yet it's necessary because in the very end it's going to save us money.
So, Mr. Mayor, just so quickly before our city engineer.
Yes.
Who gives a little preview, I just wanted to mention that when we went through, and Lindell Avenue has not been on our five-year street reconstruction plan, although we did apply for federal funds last go-around, and were not successful, we recognized the need. It was when we were going through the CIP process earlier this year that it became a bigger, it rose more to the top with the condition and where, how the, actually, it's a lot of the underground infrastructure, which kind of you can see on the surface with the ruts and things that are happening, and so that's how it's there and where we are in the process, is nowhere. If it gets approved tonight, we'll start. So, I'll let Jeff go from there with the timing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Jeff here's the city engineer. Yeah, so as Kirsten explained, we're just starting this process when we look at it, and councilmember Garcia mentioned our Sweet Streets campaign. The idea with the Sweet Streets campaign is this reconstruction or rehabilitation of the streets within Richfield. They're all the same age, you're talking about fifty, sixty-year-old streets in many cases. So, with the reconstruction of Portland and the reconstruction of Sixty-Sixth and the Mill and Overly are our residential streets, we really have three major arterial roadways that are in bad condition, Nicollet Avenue, Lindell Avenue, and Penn Avenue. Two of those, Nicollet and Penn, are county roads, and so after our experience on Portland and the funding and going after that, we're going to let, we're going to support, but let the county lead Nicollet and Penn, and Lindell is the city street. And so, when we analyzed the condition, we started to look at maybe there's some rehabilitation we can do, but for lack of a better analogy, it's like putting a Band-Aid on something that, that needs major surgery. So, we're, the, what you, the item you have in front of you tonight is, is the start of that process, hiring a consultant to begin the preliminary engineering. The item has both preliminary and final, but it, design, but it should be noted that after preliminary, there'll still be council action to approve a layout and move into final. So, preliminary design for, for residents and community members that might be interested. Typically, like we've done on Sixty-Sixth Street and Portland Avenue, it's a blank slate. So, we, typically our first open house is just an aerial of the corridor, and we ask the community, what issues are you seeing on this street? What do you need out of a reconstruction? What are you looking for? What do you like, maybe in, in some cases? But then we go from there and, and try to solve those issues with the design that works for the community.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion in regards to item B on the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion to, do we, I guess, I'll make the motion to, for approval of design engineering contract with Bolton and Menck Incorporated for the Lindell Avenue Street reconstruction between Sixty-Sixth Street and Seventy-Sixth Street, and approval of a resolution for reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of street reconstruction's bonds to be issued by the city of the Lindell Avenue Street reconstruction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I got a second. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B is passed. Item E was also removed. I don't know that this got assigned. Mike, did you ask this?
Yeah, I did. So, I've had some conversations with Mr. Meter, who spoke during the public comment, and this is for the consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a subdivision waiver allowing the division between seventy-four forty-five Humboldt Avenue into two lots. As I understand, the homeowner has a double lot on the south side of the lot is their current home, and they would like to divide and have, build another home on that lot. And Mr. Meter made in the public comment, I think, his big point of information is about the transportation language that was passed, I guess, in two thousand and four, I think you mentioned, and making sure that residents know about that. I guess, I, I'd like a little background where that comes from, and as I understand, that's, it's sort of like this what-if. There's no action that, right now, that would call that to fruition, but.
Sure, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, yes, and pretty much all of two thousand and three and the early part of two thousand and four, there was an issue trying to decide what to do with the future when thirty-five W expanded. I came, I started with the city in February two thousand and four, so I came in at the very end when the approvals came. Ken Meter was there throughout all of the discussion, along with the neighbors. There were twenty-two alternatives that were parceled down to just a handful towards the end, and what, what it was, was it was all about right-of-way and minimizing the right-of-way takings in that area. So, the flyover offered the least amount of right-of-way, because otherwise you'd have a ramp that would take out a whole block, blocks of homes that were parallel to the corridor. So, the flyover was able to save the most homes. The parcel that is on the agenda tonight doesn't show to be affected by right-of-way taking, and either of the ones, that might be a possibility. Everything's a little fuzzy because there's no final design, it was all very preliminary, but there could be impacts that are visual, there could be sound impacts, that kind of stuff came up, there were the talks about noise walls and stuff like that would help protect it. But what I can do tonight is verify, yes, Mr. Meter's correct, all that is true, and that if and when they ever expand, thirty-five W is the big question mark. They already rebuilt the bridge, so the bridge was rebuilt with the future in mind, and you know, if they come back and do anything with thirty-five W, you know, your guess is as good as mine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will add onto that, that as you may have, may know that, that Bloomington and, and Richfield and a number of their communities and, and agencies are pushing for the thirty-five W four ninety-four interchange reconstruction. I think that the full build-out of that is kind of where the flyover kind of came in, but the phase one of that that's being pushed would not any, include any work on the ramps at Seventy-Sixth Street.
It's my recollection, I think that's on the thirty-five W commission's, I think it actually meets here Thursday morning.
Yep.
And I, I guess I haven't looked, they were, what they were looking for is breaking it into smaller pieces because it's about a ninety-million-dollar project or somewhere in the vicinity.
Right, that, that smaller piece, that first phase is primarily the northbound to westbound movement.
To westbound.
And not the full interchange.
And I think they're pushing that one first because of the orange line and, and some of the things that are, with that, and I'm trying to remember, you know, I've seen the overall design, and I can't recall. I, I, so I'm not even going to venture a guess on whether or not it's going to have any impact, so I'm just going to take a step back for it, but from my perspective, it's, it's another eight, ten, twelve years down the road anyhow, so I don't, you know, I, I don't know what it's going to look like, and I expect that, that all the, all the plans will change, at least to, to some degree.
Correct. I, I can tell you that the interchange design in two thousand and three or four, when this was discussed, is not the same design.
Doesn't even resemble what's out today, yeah. So, it doesn't mean it's not a concern, but I, I don't know it's a reason not to, to approve the splitting of the lot.
It certainly, I mean, I think it's, in a way, it's a separate issue, but as long as we're talking about, just a question for staff, maybe it becomes a council consideration, but because it's kind of so outdated and in, in a way is putting an issue before, a cart before the horse on an issue that's really out of our control, I wonder if it doesn't make sense just to get this off the books and, you know, in some ways, if, if we're saying that this is our plans for the future, but, I mean, I, I could see how that could give residents, be confusing for residents, so it's just something for us to consider.
Sure, and I did try to contact our area manager, April Crockett, today to just kind of get her take. I was unsuccessful in doing that. I will follow up just to see if I can, what their thoughts are on it.
That'd be great.
You suggesting we revisit this then?
No, I, I think we could take this issue up, but the, the specific issue about the flyover piece, and if, I, I'm suggesting we might want to revisit that two thousand and four action if it's outdated and confusing for, for our residents, but it, it, as far as the issue before us, I mean, I think it's, it's ready to move forward from my perspective. So, I'll make the motion for consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a subdivision waiver allowing the division of seventy-four forty-five Humboldt Avenue into two lots.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Item number six is also yours, councilmember Howard.
Geez, I feel like I'm getting a workout here. All right. I have a public hearing in consideration of a resolution providing host approval for the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds by the city of Deep Haven for the benefit of Seven Hills Preparatory Academy. Seven Hills Preparatory Academy is a K-eight public charter school, serving students from a Bloomington campus and a Richfield campus. The Richfield campus is located at fourteen oh one West Seventy-Sixth Street, the previous home to Minnesota School of Business, which recently vacated their space. Over the last two years, Seven Hills had shared space with Minnesota School of Business. Seven Hills has continued to expand and add more grade levels to the site. They expect to fully occupy the building by the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. The purpose of the issuance of the tax-exempt revenue bonds is to finance the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, and improvement of the fifty-five-thousand-square-foot charter school facility at the Richfield campus. The project would primarily include the acquisition of the building and the construction of a thirteen-thousand-square-foot building to house a gymnasium and the renovation of the fourth and fifth floors of the existing building. Seven Hills originally approached the city of Richfield for the issuance of the tax-exempt revenue bonds. However, the city of Richfield did not have the capacity to issue bank-qualified bonds for Seven Hills this year. Subsequently, the city of Deep Haven agreed to issue the tax-exempt revenue bonds on behalf of Seven Hills. Because the project to be financed is located in Richfield prior to issuance of the tax-exempt revenue bonds by the city of Deep Haven, the city of Richfield must hold a public hearing and provide host approval in order to satisfy state law and tax law requirements. The bonds will not constitute a general or moral obligation of the city of Richfield and will not be secured by the full faith and credit of taxing powers of the city of Richfield. In the event the Seven Hills encounters financial difficulties, no assets or revenues of the city of Richfield will be available to pay the principal of or interest on the tax-exempt revenue bonds. This is a public hearing, and so I would open up the public hearing.
It's a public hearing. Anybody care to comment on the proposal? Any comments?
Is there somebody from Seven Hills here that could?
We'll talk about it once.
Yep.
If you think, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you're a Seven Hills Preparatory Academy, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I do want to say that citizenship is in our mission, and just being at the council tonight really is reaffirming how much heart the city has and how healthy its democratic processes are, and I think that's important for everyone present to hear. We're a classical education school, which means we cultivate inquiring minds, but also strong characters in addition to a healthy body. And for the past two years, we've used an indoor double gymnasium in a back parking lot for our physical education program. Our students in middle school have physical education every single day and every other day at the elementary school. So, the prospect of being able to purchase our building and expand the gymnasium will allow us to deliver on the full promise of our mission, creating the whole child and allowing them to physically recreate in a gymnasium space. The last point I'll make is, in, in listening to the school board this evening, it's important to, we know how physical activity can impact the academic performance and the character growth of students. So, we are very happy to be in Richfield, and looking back over some documents from our founding nearly twelve years ago, that was our original endeavor was to be a classical education school in Richfield. So, we're excited, so excited to be here now, giving back to the community and serving its students and its families.
If I may, I, my perception is a lot of educational facilities and districts are ruining the day. They decided that physical training didn't have, wasn't an integral part of mental training, and, and are trying to get back into a situation where they do do recess and they do do physical activity. Now finally understanding that a healthy body does make a healthy mind. So, I think, I think your venture and what you're trying to do is, is laudatory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Once again, it's a public hearing. Any other comments? Mr. Regis will explain it.
Yeah, that is actually a question, because I, could you explain the financial arrangement? Sure.
Well, I'll give it a shot, and if I fail, Mr. Grant Turpin with Dorsey and Whitney is here, and he can probably bail me out. But basically, in the past, the city of Richfield has issued tax-exempt revenue bonds, but if we issue the bonds, it goes against our bank-qualified debt, and we've already issued $9.1 million of bonds this year in 2017, so we were not able to do it. In that case, then, since the, the project is located in Richfield, but another city is issuing it, we're following basically state tax law requirements and things to do this, and we've actually been a whole city once or twice before in my tenure here and stuff like this. This isn't something new that we've done. Essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just really following the state tax law requirements to do this.
Great, thanks.
If, if I may, one question, just from a gap application, how do you quantify a moral obligation in terms of bonds?
Good question. You got me on that one.
Good answer.
That was just a gotcha.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I just could, could have a second, and I just wanted to make two, two brief comments. One, my son Justice is excited about no other agenda item here this evening more than the prospect of recreational facilities at Seven Hills Academy. And I want to say, as a parent, just so pleased and so excited that you're a part of this community, you're providing a great educational service, and you're doing a great job building a great culture, a diverse and inclusive culture with excellent academic credentials, and rounding out, and he will remind, my son Justice will remind me about the lack of a gymnasium, and will, and just will be thrilled for this. So, the students will be thrilled. I just want to publicly praise you and thank you for the great work you and your whole team and the whole culture you've established there. Also, you don't need to respond to this, but as you have an asset, that's really going to be a tremendous asset to your school. I haven't heard whether or how you'll make that asset, or if you'd make that asset available to the city for community events and community happenings, but we know you're a great neighbor, and we're glad you're here, but if you would consider that, or if you have plans for that, I'd either love to hear about them or just maybe something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Troutman, and we are exploring, along with our gymnasium, both the playground too, and making it accessible to the community from which many of our students and families live, and going back to the point about citizenship, we tell our students, our adolescents, it's not so much, you know, voting and documentation, being a citizen is really being an informed and active member of the community to which you can contribute and belong and make it better. So, we are excited about the possibility of our gymnasium, but also looking forward to the possibility of sharing that with members of the community for certain.
It's not surprising at all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, do we, do we close the public hearing?
We started to.
Second, oh, second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Or Councilmember Howard.
Then I'll move consideration of a resolution providing host approval for the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds by the city of Deep Haven for the benefit of Seven Hills Preparatory Academy.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Item number seven, Mr., or Councilmember Troutman.
Yeah, item number seven, thank you, Mr. Mayor, is consideration for the approval of the implementation of the interim improvements to the 69th Street Pilot Project. This is the project which Mr. Watts, Kevin Watts, has eloquently advocated for, and and so the, the proposal is that the, the special, the pilot project is recommended by the City Transportation Commission back in September 2016, and was approved by the council in October 11th, 2016. And the purpose initially for the project was to, one, provide a safe pedestrian walkway, and, two, slow down the vehicle speed, reduce vehicle speeds in, in that corridor between Penn and Xerxes. And it was implemented back in the fall of 2016, and it's continued up through June of this year. We had a work session earlier last month in July, and we're given good evidence that it achieved a couple of its goals, or the, the two goals of increasing a safe space or creating a safe space for pedestrians, and also reducing, to a certain extent, vehicle speeds. Something that I know my constituents, Mr. Watts has been a great advocate, but he's not alone in his concerns, safety concerns for, for vehicles. So, we brought those to, to Ms. Asher's attention, and her and her staff have been proactive in talking about different solutions that include putting a stripe six feet or some length that would create an extra, an extra buffer zone, just for the, the reasons that that Mr. Watts articulated earlier. So, with that in mind, we don't have specific, we don't have specific action items of what those will be. There's still some conversation going on between the commission and the council and the department, but we would recommend, the motion is to approve the implementation of the 66th Street project interim improvements as recommended by the Transportation Commission. So, I would make that motion with the caveat that we're continuing to address the concerns, which I think are entirely valid with regards to not just people that are mowing and shoveling, but children with, but families with children.
And I'd just like to make a comment, that is, the beauty of pilot projects, we test them out, see how they work before we invest completely in them and making the change. And we did have this discussion at a last study session, and that was brought up. So, I think continuing to work with residents, with the community, with the neighbors, with our staff, to look at what makes most sense is a really good idea.
With that being said, do we have a timeline on if there's going to be minor reconfigurations of the street, when they're going to occur?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council members, we would like to get it done before winter comes. Right now, it's a detour route for 66th Street, so we had a little bit of discussion internally yet this week about when are we going to do it when it's a detour route? I don't know that we have much choice, because if we wait, you know, you can't stripe if it's too cold, and sometimes they work until the snow flies. So, I think we will probably do it under the detour, and so that, yet this fall is when we like, as soon as we decide exactly what we're going to do, then we'll try to program it to get it done.
Okay, Ken, are we comfortable in, in suggesting to Mr. Watts for his edification that there's going to be a four-foot buffer?
Yes, I did speak with Mr. Watts.
Protecting the, the property on the south side of 69th Street when they're mowing their lawns or just doing lawn work or anything else.
Absolutely.
And I suppose you're not going to grant me the, the suggestion that the 10-foot stripe should be limited to six feet?
Well, it depends on if you want to sweep it, that's.
I don't need to sweep it.
That's the, that's the rub, so.
My job.
We're looking at keeping it like 11-foot drive lanes, but we'll talk more. I mean, we're not, we're not setting anything at this point.
And I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you know, retread old ground, but, but 10 feet is unnecessary.
Right. Nine feet, we would need to get the street sweeper through there, so, and we can, you know, whether we sweep it or not, we can talk more about. I do want to add, though, that the Transportation Commission's actual recommendation included an interim design with some modifications to address the concerns, and also that we project in our capital improvement program when we can actually make permanent improvements to this road. So, next spring, when we're doing our capital improvement program, we'll see where that fits. We have a lot on our plate at this point, so this interim could be quite lengthy.
Well, I'm just thankful that it's Councilmember Troutman's word, because I don't want to talk to people about putting in sidewalks.
Have, have you moved recently, Mr. Mayor?
I'm, I'm going to defer to you, you're the councilman.
I, I would just add, on, on the record, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, and especially as we're, we're door-knocking in the last several months, about, about the experimental area, and one, one comment I thought made a lot of sense, is an older biker, and other comments have been made, that bikers oftentimes or sometimes choose not to use the bike pedestrian lane, that that feels uncomfortable for them, but that the orange poles in between, kind of, for folks that may have any kind of depth perception problem, when you're coming down that hill, can kind of feel like a slalom a little bit, that as they're, as they're biking down, which, which might lend itself towards the mayor's position of, of narrowing the, and focusing on what the goal was. The goal was to create a cost-effective, safe space for pedestrians, and if bikes are choosing to use the roadway, that maybe we, we would give the, the mayor's thoughts some good counsel, and I'll defer back to the mayor.
Well said, Councilmember Troutman.
Can I add that, with, when we reduce that multi-use path to, if we go with six feet, it will then become pedestrian probably only, right?
Right, it's correct.
Okay, so then the bikes will use the lanes.
All right, so I would.
Councilmember, just wanted to make, please, a quick comment. I'm a liaison of the Transportation Commission. I want to thank our transportation staff and our Transportation Commission, and the, the community that's really been engaged in this process, this pilot project. I've learned a lot, and it's, I think it's a testament to trying out an idea, gathering data, listening to folks. I've talked with constituents that are both supportive and opposed. Actually, at the Transportation Commission, when this was approved, I think there were five or six folks that came. Five were supportive, one was in opposition, we got an email, also in opposition. The, when I've door-knocked that area, the main complaint that I've heard has been the speed on the streets and the fear of safety of very fast-moving cars. You know, for me, the data is, is compelling, that we've reduced speeds and made that road more safe, and we've made it more safe for pedestrians. I think some of these tweaks and listening to folks make sense for that work to continue, but I just wanted to call out the work and the data that underlies this, that this isn't just conjecture. You know, we, we've undergone study, we've seen reductions, we've studied, have there been an increase in accidents and things like that? There haven't. So, I just appreciate the, the process and the input that we've received from the public, and I think it's a positive result, and it can continue to evolve as we work with the residents.
Thank you. City managers' report. Do we approve it?
I believe, I believe you have a motion on the table.
Yep, so I just re, remove to approve the implementation of the 69th Street project interim improvements as recommended, and with the, with the recommendations and ongoing communication with the Transportation Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. City managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I really don't have a, a report myself, but Pam is going to make a presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez actually just asked me to very briefly, and I'll make it brief, just give you a quick update on airport-related issues. There was a noise oversight committee meeting at the end of July that we both attended. I'm the main rep right now, she's the alternate. The one interesting subject, actually, that came up, we got a report, and Councilmember Howard's probably familiar with this topic, but about the Super Bowl and the aircraft activity that we can expect during the Super Bowl, which is on February 4th. But it's, it's quite interesting for the airport to be planning for this. They have to find room to land, service, and park approximately 1,600 aircraft operations during the course of this event, which will also impact the reliever airports, and they advise us that day after the Super Bowl has the strong potential for being the busiest passenger day in MSP history, and it will be likely the busiest operational day ever at the MAC relievers. So, we've asked, I asked specifically that we just make sure that there, we get the information, they help get the information out to people that live around the airport prior to this event, because there will be noticeable noise impacts, I'm sure, during the Super Bowl that, that day, and I guess they start leaving the Super Bowl at like halftime, is what I'm told. I don't know why they would do that, of course, but, and so they start, there's a lot of activity into about 2:00 a.m. that night. So, anyway, our residents might be noticing that, and we'll do our best to also get the word out, but ask the MAC to do the same. And the other, the other thing I wanted to just make you aware of is that the MAC has put together this video series, and it's called Aircraft Noise Basics, and they've now just posted up their fourth video series, it's called How Are Runway Decisions Made? And they do a really good job, it's on their website, which is wwwmacnoise.com, and we've also posted a link on our website now. This most recent video is very, it's only like three minutes, but it's very interesting, helps educate people as to how runways are selected for arrivals and landings, and so they're really trying to do a good job of keeping residents informed and also updating, making their operate, monthly operational reports interactive. So, anything else, if you have questions for either myself or Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez related to the airport, but I'll try to update you as things occur. That's it.
Thank you much.
I would just like to say thank you so much, Assistant Demetranko, for, Assistant City Manager, for doing the work on the noise oversight committee as well as the city manager. I will never be able to fill the shoes of Tom FitzHenry, who was in my position previously, and this was one of his babies. So, thank you so much for that, and I really appreciate you bringing the update to all of us, because when I was at the last meeting, hearing about the Super Bowl was very interesting, and frankly, really got it, you know, got it on my radar, thinking about the Super Bowl and the airport traffic and the noise, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Claims and payroll.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I would suggest to Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez is that she should probably learn how to fly a plane.
I have no problem with that. Someone, if someone can teach me.
Well, the city would pick up the cost, I'm sure.
That's in, that's in the administrative budget that we have, right?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.